Hello again, we have come back from closed session and there are no reportable actions from that session, so we'll move on in our agenda. And as we see the next frame on screen, I'd like to remind all, oh, here it is. This is the information that I wanted to see. Thank you so much staff for putting it up. And that is that today's webinar, you can join us via Zoom, and that's the meeting ID number on screen and/or by phone. This is the second session that we had using a different method of engaging the audience. And as you join us, you will have to alert staff who are monitoring the public participation by using the raise hand option or raise hand feature in Zoom. And if you're joining us by phone, press star nine to alert staff you'd like to comment and press star six to unmute once you're called on. So each speaker will have about three minutes, three minutes to speak. There will be a timer on the screen and you will be muted until your opportunity to provide public comment. There won't be video, video will be turned off for public participants. And when I, as your mayor, open the comment period during each portion of the agenda, please use the raise hand feature or press pound nine if you're connecting via telephone. Again, that will inform alert staff that you have a comment to provide. So thank you all for joining us and let's go on to the next item on the agenda, please. And that's, we don't have recognitions or presentations tonight. And did we have any public comments?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. We do have comments. We will now take comments from David Ruport.
Can you hear me? Good evening, mayors, city council staff, and the general public. My name is David Ruport Jr. I'm a 46-year-plus resident of the City of Pinole. I am a philosophical adherent to the concept of having a museum in Pinole, but at the same time, I am a critic of how that idea has been applied to our city over the past 40 years. I would like to bring a quick notice to the public that Pinole Historical Society and their alter ego, Pinole Historic Museum, have recently published in their summer edition of their publication entitled News Reads, a stern critique of the process that's been going on in Pinole for a long time, specifically the last few months. I find that process to be somewhat flawed in its logic, and I have actually issued each and every one of you a nine-page response to some of those comments made in the President's message by Mr. Jeff Rubin, who is actively involved in this process of supporting and promoting a museum. I will not actually go into that article in depth, but I do request that each of you read it, the general public also. It's located on their website, www.pinolehistoricalsociety.org, on pages one, two, eight, and four. As I stated, in response to what is printed there, which I find somewhat unnerving and not quite accurate, I issued you a nine-page position letter, which all of you should have by now, with some addendums which deal with some ethical issues that I think that are still unresolved, even though we've been working at that issue for a number of months. I encourage you to read that. If you do read both articles, read them as you leisure, as your own independent judgment could apply to those. Unfortunately, my big problem here is that there's been a long rush over the past 40 years to get museums started, and it's gone circular at that point. So what I'm indicating that we should do is exactly what was indicated by Councilman table the article, or excuse me, table the point until we get more knowledge and more communication and don't rush into a money pit hole, which we see that we've been doing for the last few years with no end in sight. Again, thank you very much. Please look at those articles. If you want to talk to me, you can give me a mic.
We will now hear from David Ruport. Ms. Stone, we just did.
That was, okay.
George Persley.
Good evening. I have some exciting news from what happened at the last meeting of the Pinole Library Commissioners on Thursday. As most of you know, Measure X was passed last November, and it's going to give a $112 million influx into the county's coffers. And so what's been happening since May 12th is there's been a Measure X Community Advisory Board seeking public comment about how that money should be spent. The last, on July 28th, our county librarian will make a seven-minute pitch to the advisory board saying that we need to spend some of that money, not all of it, but some of it, to increase the library hours across the board in the county. But one of the things about our library hours, it really depends on your zip code. The wealthier communities have more library hours than the not-so-wealthy have fewer. So what I'm asking tonight is for the city council members and the general public to write a letter of support for our county librarian as she talks to the advisory board. I'll also be sending out a packet of information and a sample letter that I'm hoping the city council members individually would consider, and you can amend it, send it as is, throw it away, write your own, and get it there fortunately, hopefully by July 26th, so that Allison, the county librarian, can add it to her packet. We believe the commissioners and the county librarian that of all of the different issues that the advisory board are considering, like early childhood, community safety, safety net jobs, immigration, we do a lot of the, the library does a whole bunch of stuff around adult literacy and English as a second language. Obviously, we have tons of programs throughout the county libraries for children and their parents. So we think that spending the money to go to a higher baseline of support in terms of hours across the board will actually address a number of these issues that the advisory board will be considering to send on to the Board of Supervisors in August, and then in October or thereabouts, the Board of Supervisors will make the final decisions. So I'll be sending that your way, and if you do end up writing a letter of support to Lisa Driscoll, this will be, this information will be in the package I'll send, please copy Allison on that so she can add it to her packet as she is soliciting, obviously, support from city council, people across the county to support this, I think, very worthy cause, and I hope you do too. Thank you.
We will now take public comment from Roy Swearingen.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We had a great turnout on Dumpster Day event that was hosted by the Pinole Community Services Commission and Republic Services this past Saturday. Over 200 residents lined up at the Pinole Valley Park to get rid of an accumulated junk and debris. There's also a free garage sale at times. Some people left with items that were discarded by others. Kind of fun. Thanks to the Community Services Commission for all their hard work on this project. 12 years ago, the city council at that time created the Community Services Commission to serve the Pinole community with events like Dumpster Day and Coastal Cleanup and some of the other community projects that we have done, and it's been a resounding success. Thank you to our event coordinator, Bob Kopp, for all his work getting the signs out and running the event on Saturday. Thanks also to the Pinole Parks and Recreation Manager, Maria Pacazo, for coordinating the event with Republic Services and, most importantly, bringing the donuts and coffee for the workers on Saturday. That was probably the most important thing of the whole morning. Helping with the event also were our Public Works employees who provided street A-frame signs, chairs, tables, and stayed to assist with the unloading of the cars and trucks. On hand were Community Service Commission members Laurel Martin, Rafael Menas, Darren Clark, Nicholas Tiller, and Past Mayor Pete Murray and myself representing the City of Pinole. Thanks always to Debbie Ojeda, who took lots of memorable pictures of the event. It was unfortunate that none of the city council were able to attend this citywide-sponsored community activity. As I checked the cars and trucks coming in, which was my job that day, I talked with each one of the drivers, and I witnessed many family members helping their parents dispose of items. I witnessed neighbors helping neighbors who did not have the means to get the disposable items on site. One of the incident that stands out, though, an older man and his son with a pickup truck loaded with their own debris asked me about the one-load limit. I said, "That is a standard event policy." He said his neighbor lost both legs and could not load his items for disposal and wanted to know if he could load them and make a second trip for his neighbor. I said, "No problem. That's what community service is all about. Neighbors and friends helping each other, no politics, no big unnecessary social media programs, just people helping where help is needed. A great community event hosted by Pinole and Republic Services. This report brought to you courtesy of the Red, White, and Blue. Thank you."
We will now take public comment from Debbie Long.
Okay, can you hear me? Hello? Hi, good evening. While I am not interested in debating any citizen and using my time under citizens to be heard, I felt it was necessary to remind every one of you of some of the other aspects of the Brown Act. As has been established, Councilwoman Murphy refuses to stand for the flag or pledge of allegiance. As we know, it's his right to do so. However, to date, he has refused to state his reasons for not respecting the flag of the United States of America. In my criticism of Councilwoman Murphy, I have been attacked on several fronts by his supporters, some of who have resorted to name-calling. I thought citizens to be heard was to be allowed to express ourselves regarding city issues and not use it as a forum regarding personal attacks on other citizens. Under Section 4G, Note 41 and 42 of the Brown Act, it states, "Public bodies may not prohibit criticism of the policies, procedures, programs, or services of the agency or the acts or emissions of the legislative body." And the ability to speak and offer criticism at the meeting of public bodies is also protected by the First Amendment. In particular, the First Amendment has been held to protect the right of citizens to criticize the conduct of particular government officials and employees at public meetings. In other words, an elected official is fair game under the Brown Act. However, while free speech is afforded to everyone, nowhere in the Brown Act does it say citizens are afforded three minutes to attack another citizen simply because they disagree with them. Perhaps other citizens that want to speak won't do so out of fear of being attacked and singled out. So I will continue to exercise my right to free speech under the Brown Act and continue to ask Councilwoman Murphy why he disrespects and does not stand for the flag. Once I'm given an answer by Councilwoman Murphy that is clear and a direct response to the question, I can then stop asking that question. And since I have some remaining time, I'd like to ask if the council ever considered, when they have these long meetings in closed session, that they hold them over and continue them after the last agenda item. We've done that in the past, and I think it would be more respectful of the council instead of having the community and citizens have to wait extra long time after each closed session. Thank you.
All right. We'll now hear from Rafael Menas.
Greetings, Mayor, Council, staff, and members of the public. I'd like to thank Roy Swearingen for his comments about the Dumpster Day and to echo most of them with regards to, you know, the quality of everybody that took part and the fact that it went quite well, whether it was lovely, everybody there was able to help out. I note a few things, though. First, we were technically encouraging people not to show up who weren't directly involved, so I wouldn't necessarily blame the council for not being there this time. At other community service events, we've openly asked for people to join and volunteer, but this time around, I think we explicitly asked for no outside volunteers. I'm not sure whether that was a liability thing on the city's part or just a COVID precaution, but just a point to bring up. Secondly, with regards to social media, I think that, you know, social media outreach is important. We actually ended Dumpster Day this year, and there was some space left in the last dumpster. So we probably could have done a little bit more social media outreach in order to make sure that we actually filled all the dumpsters up. I know that I received comment from some members of the community, but they hadn't heard about Dumpster Day or they hadn't heard enough about it. So I do think that community outreach in order to make sure that all members of the community engage with events is an important part and function of what the city should do around those events, just to make sure everybody's aware of them and can take part in them. I have other comments as well, but they're actually going to be more related to the consent calendar items on the agenda this evening, so I'll yield the remainder of my time. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, there are no more public comments. Thank you. I will close the comment period and move on to the next agenda item. All right, we have agenda item number six. We have no proclamations tonight. And we have a presentation, and that is by Director Marguerite Young and Mr. Andrew Lee of EB Mud. And they will be, he, Mr. Lee is the Customer and Community Services Manager. They both will be presenting, giving us a drought update. And are our guests, are guests ready to go? And are, if they have a slide deck, are there, is their slide deck ready to go? While we're waiting for that, Ms. Young and Mr. Lee, the council is expecting a 10-minute, 15-minute presentation, and then we'll follow up with about 15-minute question-and-answer session. And that will allow us to be fully focused on that. We've had prior presentations, and although very interesting, we know that we can also follow up via our city manager should there be any remaining questions. So thank you in advance for your preparation for this presentation. Ms. Young, are you?
I am ready. Yes, thank you for the opportunity to address the council tonight. I'm Director Marguerite Young. That's, actually, I think we're still on the first slide. I'm honored to represent the Pinole area along with my fellow board member, Lisa McIntosh, and I think we, we switch back and forth for this update. I'm committed to carrying out East Bay Mud's mission to protect the public health and the environment, and I'm joined today by Andrew Lee, Manager of Customer and Community Services, and we will talk about drought and water conservation, those being the thing that's on everybody's, tip of everybody's mind, tip of everybody's tongue these days. But first, just to set the context, next slide, please. East Bay Mud's water supply comes from two areas primarily. The McCullough watershed up in the Sierra foothills provides about 90% of our water and flows 90 miles downhill, pretty much all gravity-fed to our local reservoirs. I'm sure most of you are familiar with San Pablo Reservoir, probably Brionis, maybe not so much Upper San Leandro, but we also have many other smaller tanks and reservoirs around the service area to make sure that we're delivering clean, safe water. We also get local supply. About 10% of our water supply comes from local rainfall, and in dry years like this, we're looking to our actual third source of water, which is from the, we tap into the Sacramento River through our Freeport Regional Facility, which you can hopefully make out on the map there. And that will supplement our main water source as we proceed through the drought and enable us to provide reliable supply. We have been maintaining this vast watershed and protecting public health for nearly 100 years, and we are very proud to serve Pinole and the rest of our service area. Next slide, please. In May, or in April, I thought it was early May, but I guess it was the end of April, we did make a stage-one drought declaration. Throughout the years, climate change has shown us that it has been and will continue to be a real threat. One of the threats of climate change is more frequent and intense droughts, which is what we're seeing now. We're in the second year of dry conditions, and this year, our water supply has dropped to the point where we do need to call on voluntary conservation measures. So even though we've got these several different sources of supply, the whole state's being affected by this issue. We plan for those effects of climate change with our diversified water portfolio, and at times like this, what we really depend on is water conservation. There will also, as I mentioned, be buying supplemental supplies, and we will be looking to increase our recycled water deliveries for irrigation and industrial uses, and as well as focusing on fixing our leaky pipes throughout, through our pipeline replacement system. The graphic that you can see here was recently published in our urban water management plan, and it shows the various stages of drought. And right now, we're in that stage-one drought situation where we're asking for a voluntary conservation level of 10%. With our, actually, this year, the runoff projections have gotten worse as the, as the spring has gone, spring and summer have gone on. So on April 27th, we triggered the purchase of supplemental water supplies from the Sacramento River, something we usually hold off on doing, and we'll begin using that in September. We should note that different parts of California are experiencing different degrees of drought based on precipitation levels. So you've probably been hearing about Marin County, which relies entirely on their local supply. If we relied entirely on our local supply, we would be in a, in a similar situation to Marin. So that's why water conservation goals vary based on location, and so a statewide, one-size-fits-all goal, you know, isn't necessarily the most appropriate. So our primary water source, as I mentioned, the McCullough watershed, where we had less-than-average precipitation, but we're in decent shape due to weather, to weather this drought with our, actually, I'm reading a script that doesn't make sense to me. We think we're actually in decent shape to weather this drought with, at this point, with the 10% voluntary conservation effort and having all of our communities really lean into that along with our supplemental supplies. We have the ability to, you have the ability to monitor the latest on the drought and also get water-saving tips on our website just by visiting eastbemud.com/drought. And I don't think we have that posted on a slide yet, or maybe it's coming later with Andrew. I am now, though, going to turn it over to our Water Conservation Department, you know, and Customer Service Director, Andrew Lee, to talk more about what's going on with the drought and what you can do.
Next slide, please. Another, the next one, next slide. Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you, Director Young. My name is Andrew Lee. I am the Manager of Customer Service at East Bay Mud. So here is where things are right now in terms of the drought. This water year was the second driest on record for East Bay Mud's McCullough watershed, and it is the driest for the East Bay. So as a result, as Director Young mentioned, that our board declares stage-one drought in April. And what that means is that we are asking all of our customers to help reduce water use by 10% district-wide. We're also planning on using our Freeport Facility to buy supplemental water supply, as Director Young mentioned. We are taking these actions now, just in case next year is going to be another dry one. So our long-term planning has really put us in good shape in response to droughts. We have our Freeport Facility move new sources of water. We also have our recycle water program to offset any potable demands, and we also have a wealth of conservation program, which I'll be talking about in more detail tonight, to help really achieve all the necessary water savings to get us through the drought. But before I get into some, you know, very specific actions we can all do to help save water, I just want to take a moment to thank all of our customers who continue to make conservation a way of life and conserving water on an ongoing basis. And collectively, our customers are using 13% less water in 2020 compared to water use back in 2013 at the beginning of the last drought. So as you're going to see more information about the drought and outreach from East Bay Mud during the next few months, we are confident that all of our customers will answer our call to conserve. Next slide, please. So we need everyone to do their part to help save water, including cities, counties, businesses, and residential customers. We also want you to know that you are not alone, and East Bay Mud is here to help you with this goal. So we have a number of tools and programs to help residential water customers, businesses, and public entity to use water more efficiently. So I'm going to describe some of those things for you today at a very low cost to save water, as well as some investments you may consider for more long-term, for long-term water savings. So here are some of the things you can do today. Sign up on our website to get on the web portal. Any customer can monitor water use by getting, setting up an automatic leak alert and get high-use notifications from East Bay Mud. Check for leaks. Go home and check for leaks and repair those leaks if you find any. Our website has many tools to guide. Our website has many tools to guide and guides to help identify potential leaks, and I, you know, on this slide here, I have listed some, most of the common leaks you may find in your home, in your irrigation system, your toilets and fixtures, and your swimming pools, either through evaporation or leaks on the pipes. For commercial, industrial, and institutional customers, please sign up for our quarterly newsletter to learn more about water efficiency technologies and practices, so you can practice those and make water use more efficient. Next slide, please. So cutting back on outdoor water use is probably the most important focus for us in meeting our conservation goals. We want to make sure that we are all watering efficiently and not overwatering. We are asking all of our customers to do the following when dealing with the outdoor use. Water your turf three times a week or less, if you can. Water your trees and shrubs once a week. Those do not need to be watered every single day. Try to adjust your sprinkler system to prevent any kind of overspring or runoff, like what you see in that picture up on the corner. And try to time it to, you know, so your, your water come on at dusk or dawn to avoid evaporation. And we have a lot of tools, like I mentioned, to help manage water use. Now, Iris Water Budget Program helps send monthly customized water budgets for irrigation-only accounts, and this water budget is typically developed based on the individual's lot size, by location, and the local weather. And also, our website has information on how to schedule irrigation, calculators, how much water you need for your lot, and other tips to help conserve overall. Next slide, please. So there are also things that customers can do to save water in the long term. So if you haven't done so, try to look at your fixtures within your home and your appliances and install and replace them with water-efficient fixtures and appliances. And of course, when appropriate, consider, consider converting your turf or your lawn to water-efficient and native landscaping. We do offer a very generous rebate program for lawn conversions. For the purpose of this drought, we are offering a special super rebate that doubles the rebate amount to $1.50 per square foot of lawn converted, specifically for projects that meet certain requirements. We are also updating our lawn rebate program to include medians and parking strips. The city and large complexes may be interested in this program because typically that's what this, you know, we designed this program for. And install water-efficient irrigation equipments like smart controllers, drip irrigation, and other submeters to help really the overall outdoor use would be also very helpful. Next slide, please. So East Bay Mud also offers grants to community groups to develop publicly accessible gardens demonstrating water conservation and other sustainable landscaping principles. We award grants ranging anywhere from $500 to $15,000. Really, the goal of this grant is to help demonstrate that, and educate customers that there are other alternatives than to having turf in your front. So if you're interested, please contact our water conservation team for more information and really for more ideas on what our customers have done. You can also visit our website to see examples of some lawn conversion projects or find maps of those demonstration gardens in our service area, so you can pay that a visit. Next slide, please. So our goal here, obviously, is to help all of our customers to save water. And to do that, you know, our customers can order our free Home Water Survey kit that kind of help them walk, you know, walk them through their home to check for leaks and evaluate water use. And that kit can be ordered online and at eastbymud.com in our online store. So we are all asking all of our customers to irrigate. And don't overwater your plants. Ultimately, make, try to make every drop of water count. And for those of you, you know, some really quick actions that we can do today is, you know, for those of you who enjoys the long 10-minute showers, take shorter showers, reduce it down to five minutes, and try to run only full loads, you know, in your dishwasher or clothes washer. And check for leaks, you know, both inside and outside of your home, and if you find them, repair them. Ultimately, try to use water with a purpose. And next slide, please. And lastly, we're here for all of, you know, of our customers to assist you, and we can perform water audits by, you know, over the phone, and we can do consultations either by phone or through Zoom to help you understand your water use and implement some improvements for your specific situation. We can help you get a setup on an account in our website, so you can also manage your water use online. Our staff is also available to help, you know, provide presentations, webinars, or make other materials available to, like, city staff, residents, school, and the community groups to talk, you know, really talk about a way to conserve. So please check out eastbymud.com to learn more, and I wanted to thank you for helping us to save water. Then that's the last slide.
Thank you, Mr. Lee and Director Young, and so appreciate that you've left time for questions. So I will first open it to public comment, in case there are any public comments on this agenda item. Madam City Clerk or Ms. Stone, are there any public comments?
Madam Mayor, there are no public comments.
Thank you. I will close the public comment period on this item and turn to council. Councilmember Toms, please.
Yes, thank you for the presentation to both of you. Back in 2011, I did participate in the rebate program and got a pretty substantial rebate. I didn't have to pay my East Bay Mud bill for quite some time because of the rebate, and I used California native vegetation. But I just wanted to ask you, do you still require, before somebody does that program, to contact East Bay Mud so that they can verify that there is a lawn there, and then they can do the project?
And yes, absolutely. I, anyone who's interested in participating in the lawn replacement rebate program definitely should contact East Bay Mud first. We want to know what's being changed out, is really, we can verify that, because we do want to verify what's there before and what's after. So we definitely encourage people to contact us ahead. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
And thank you for taking advantage of the rebate. We've, I think we've retired 2 million square feet of lawn. Andrew, is that right? Something like that?
It's a big number, Director Young. I think you're right there, but definitely it is a big number.
Right. Councilmember Tave?
Thank you, Manager Lee and Director Young. I, I want to thank you guys for coming out and giving us this information. It's, it's great to have because we can then spread it to the community. Can you guys hear me okay? Yeah?
Will you hear your background more than we can hear you? So if you would please speak, that's probably better. Thank you.
How about, okay. So I, I wanted to ask, you know, with, with the agency, I was reading the Urban Report about the recycled water. That's been an issue that's come up in Panol. We've talked about it, about doing studies as to how it would benefit Panol. It, it, the date you're showing here is 2025 for, for construction in this, it's April 2021 report. Is that real, a realistic date? I mean, are we going to start seeing a construction of purple pipe at that time? I know that the state has some aggressive, you know, goals as to getting a recycled water plant, to increase inventory, to start battling these droughts in, in higher volume. I guess my question is, is this plan realistic, and is this something we're going to be seeing soon?
Director Young, you want me to try to answer this question? But I also know Ben.
Yeah, I think Ben, I think Ben is on the line to address some of those questions as well.
That's right. Hello, Councilmember Tave. My name is Ben Glickstein. I'm a Community Affairs Rep with a focus on recycled water at East Bay Mud, and it's a great question. The, there are a lot of things in the urban water management plan and the 2019 recycled water man, uh, plan that it was based, that, that it brings in information from that are scheduled out but are dependent on funding, right? So in the case of the recycled, the most likely recycled water program, which appears in those plans in the Panol region, which would be a collaboration with the Philip 66 plant, that does appear on schedules, but it's optimistic in the sense that we haven't actually identified the funding mechanism to allow it to occur. So it probably is a bit optimistic.
So maybe we should ask the funding question. Are you guys receiving rescue plan money as an agency? And how, how do we collaborate? I mean, I, this conversation has happened two years ago. We got a presentation, and they talked about recycled water being disinfected, and I mean, here we are in one of the worst droughts on record, or perceived worst droughts on record. It looks like things are not getting better, and this looks like, you know, something that needs to be accelerated. How, how do we, how do we partner? How do we start this conversation to create a real project and then start getting real funding behind it? I know that for, for our community, our parks, we're just going through a parks master plan. We have a hard time watering the lawn, or the, the parks and keeping them fresh and, and, and new. But recycled water changes that. It also changes if we are able to offer that to our, our residents as well as a mechanism to water their lawns. I mean, what, what steps are we actively taking to get, to get this off the ground?
Yeah, thank you for the follow-up question. You know, essentially, I, I can't speak to the whole picture of the way that we're receiving federal funding at the agency. There's a lot of different mechanisms and approaches. So on that question, I may have to defer it or get back to you. We are seeking fund, federal funding and state funding for a whole ton of projects, and I think it's just important to recognize that the recycled water program is one in a big tool belt that we possess to try, and the purpose of all of those programs is essentially to ensure that there's enough potable water for us to keep doing our essential activities, you know, drinking and showering and industry and, and all that stuff that we do in the service area. So, you know, when we seek federal funding, that could also be in order to, you know, have a reserve to, you know, whether it's to purchase water in a drought or to upgrade our water treatment plants, et cetera. So when it comes to recycled water specifically, we take an approach where we analyze the cost-effectiveness of an individual project based on how much it would cost our rate payers, and, and whether we can identify sort of offsets to that from a public-private partnership or, or fund, federal funding, as you were describing. And we, and based on that, we're going to go ahead and determine, you know, does this one make sense to move forward? And it's not just, do we want it or not? Because of course, we would love to see all the water recycling we could possibly have in every single region, but it's also, how does that stack up against our alternatives, which are, you know, in a drought, water conservation initiatives, bringing water in from the Sacramento River, et cetera? So, so I, I just want to mention that. I apologize for the, the long-winded answer, you know, because the answer is, you know, you mentioned, for example, that you would love the residents of Panol to be able to get this water and use it on their lawns, and I appreciate that sentiment as well. The, the tough fact is actually none of the residents of the East Bay Mud service area can get the water and use it on their lawns, because for the most part, that's been, we're still looking into it, but at the moment, that's been deemed not very cost-effective, right? All the, the greenhouse gas emissions and the, people, people bring their trucks to the plant or whatnot, just make it kind of low on the, on the priority list. And so the, the reality is, looking at all those factors, looking at all those prioritizations, the best project that we've identified for, for the Panol region would be to do, to maybe look at something with that project we've been discussing for years, and I agree, it's been a long time, with the, the Philip 66 plant, and because it's very, it's point-to-point, you know, that's relatively low cost overall, but still, it's something that wouldn't really make sense for our rate payers unless, you know, it was something that we were partnering for, for funding on. So I, I know it's not, I mean, I, when you say, what can we, yeah, go ahead.
Ben, that, that answer was, was what we've been getting.
Yeah.
And, and what I'm trying to find out is, how do we move forward? This council has, has approved $200,000 to find out what benefit the Panol could not happen, you know, if we were to get recycled water. We just finished, I think, a 40, $47 million wastewater upgrade, right? We're looking to the next project to help benefit our, our city, namely, and, and the state in general by reducing our water usage by introducing recycled water so that we could still maintain some level of service. What I'm, what I'm seeing is, or what I'm hearing is the same answer again and again, even though we're seeing schedules and we're telling the public something different. I, I need to know, how do we get to the table and have this discussion? If it's with Philip 66, that, that's fantastic, whoever, whoever players are involved, but how do we move towards actively, you know, getting a project like this off the ground for the benefit of our residents and our region?
So, Councilmember, Councilmember, this is Director Young. I mean, I appreciate your frustration and appetite for this. I mean, Philip 66 is the, that's who you want to be, that's who you need to get on board to do this. That's how the Chevron Rare Facility came, sorry for the background now.
No worries. I got, I got to get you back here.
Sorry, it's our 7:30 ice cream truck, only gets 45 minutes late. They are an essential part of figuring out an economical recycled water project for Panol. I mean, putting, putting purple pipes in the ground is extraordinarily expensive. It's about $2 million a mile for us to replace pipe, and so putting new pipe in the ground, same thing, or not, maybe not quite as much, but it's, I'm going to, I'm going to go on you, but I, I appreciate your frustration, and I'm, I'm sorry we don't have a better answer for you. But I think you, you guys digging in and taking the lead with Philip 66, I think is, you know, makes a lot of sense.
So I guess what I'm asking is, the next steps would be us approaching Philip 66 and then approaching East Bay Mud? Is that step one?
East Bay Mud and Philip 66 have, are actually meeting tomorrow? I don't know if somebody from Panol is going to be participating in that meeting, or?
Thank you, Director Young. Yeah, and I was, I was, I apologize. I was trying to jump in to say that as well, because I see where this conversation is steering. Yeah, I, there is a meeting set up with some Philip 66 stakeholders and some East Bay Mud communications people tomorrow. Again, I don't actually know the scope of that meeting. I wasn't the one that set it up, and so, but that's to say, that's the first meeting that we've had with Philip 66 in about the same timeframe you're describing, in about two years, and it's probably going to be a very different conversation now. As you know, they announced a plan to try, to move on to a fully renewable fuels plan in the next few years, so we don't really know what that's going to mean, if that's going to mean they need more water or less water or what. So my understanding is that we're having a kickoff conversation tomorrow about that. Now, I can reach out to the organizer and see, you know, there may be some way to loop folks from City of Panol in at that meeting, or else at some meeting shortly thereafter. You know, I, it definitely makes sense to have all the stakeholders at the table, so, you know, it may be easiest at this point to, to move forward that meeting and then to propose a, a follow-up within, within weeks where City of Panol's involved, but that, that's right, we do have one on the books.
Well, I, I mean, right now, Panol's trucking water for cleaning the streets, for, you doing, I mean, we're, we are reusing some of this water where we can. What, what I'm getting at is that, that I would imagine most agencies that have a wastewater plant have to be looking at this, considering the federal and state government are starting to align here on getting, getting a, a reliable, sustainable water supply, you know, in, in our state. We can't just keep taxing people every time things get bad, and then when we come up with solution, we don't have any money to implement them, or they get half implemented, and we're back to square one 10 years down the line. I mean, we have to start taking, I mean, conservation is definitely part of that plan, and I appreciate and applaud you guys for coming out and doing this, this presentation. I just think we, we need a more holistic approach to this, and we need to have those multiple projects. We're a small city. We have a wastewater plant that does about three, oh, close to 2 million, 2.7 million gallons per day. I mean, that's a lot of water that we pay to go out into the bay. I mean, just that alone. I mean, just that alone easing back and figuring out a way to put that water somewhere else where it's more useful. We're kind of, there, there is savings here that I think we can benefit from. I know that you have old pipe in the ground, especially in Pinole and especially on Orleans, because I drive right by it when it breaks. What I'm saying is if you have the equipment immobilized to, to repair that pipe, you can't, or replace that pipe, you can also slide that pipe over and put purple pipe in at a lower cost. I mean, there's ways to do this. I'm just trying to figure out what those next steps are and how does Pinole and other cities in our region help? And, and, and I mean, it sounds like there's a meeting tomorrow, uh, city manager maybe? Short notice, well.
In the interest of actually, council member Tav, thanks for your question and Mr. Glickstein, thanks for your response. In the interest of allowing other questions, if they are here, uh, what we've established here is that I think Mr. Glickstein will, uh, keep our city manager informed about forthcoming meetings. And then the council can determine who would be the representative and also have a better understanding of what's on the agenda for those meetings so that we're there as an active participant. So thank you in advance for that. Any other council members with questions? Okay, I have a question for Mr. Lee. It seems to me that year after year, the residents are introduced and are reintroduced to the conservation measures. Are there any programs or initiatives that EB Mud has that are being underutilized? That you would want us to help promote? It seems to me that individual behavior can make a difference. And I'm wondering whether there is any single or, or primary activity that residents can start doing it? They're not already doing them? And/or the other aspect of this is our commercial buildings, um, small businesses, for example, if they are not already doing these conservation kinds of activities?
I would have to start by saying that our customers are doing a great job. I mean, the numbers I shared earlier is that we are actually as entirely as, we're using 13% less water compared to what we have used back in 2013. So they are doing an outstanding job. I mean, of, of course, we always want to be better. We want to improve on where we are. And, uh, I mean, some easy action we can take is looking at, is let's reduce outdoor use. Is there, if there's a way to, you know, uh, consider converting your lawn to a less water demanding landscaping, do it. We have programs like to support that to get, get you jump started. Uh, other thing is look for leaks. You know, we love water going into people's glasses and, and, you know, used for inside a home, but we definitely don't want it to go in the ground or somewhere that it's just down the drain. Those are the kind of worst way to, to have water to, uh, to be used or not used in this case. So those are the kind of simple behavior we could all practice, uh, now and into the future to really develop that behavior going forward. So we can really focus on, on using our water wisely.
Thank you, thank you. I'm also wanted to help, have you help me make the distinction between, um, using, for example, native plants, water conserving plants, not entirely doing away with greenscape. I'm not sure if you are promoting hardscape because that in and of itself has problems as well.
Not at all.
Where we don't want to, um, uh, start encouraging heat islands in urban or suburban areas. So can you please elaborate on that? Thank you.
I'd actually be happy to elaborate on that. I spent some time as a landscape horticulture student at Merritt College. So, um, we need to encourage increasing, uh, infiltration space, um, you know, and green space and looking for ways to do that in, uh, by using, um, plant material that does not require additional, you know, much additional water in the summer. Our, you know, much of California's native plants are adapted to that anyway. So that's a good choice, but it's not the only choice. California natives aren't the only plants that one could plant that have those attributes. East Bay Mud has a great book on, um, uh, plants for native, for California landscapes. There's some great demonstration gardens to go look at. And we've started doing workshops and be happy to set up a workshop in Pinole, uh, to do on sheet mulching and other, uh, methods for, um, you know, helping to encourage, um, a water, water conserving landscape, not put pouring concrete over it. So thank you for raising that.
Thank you. Made a note of that, so at some future time, we might, when we are outdoors, can be outdoors more. We might, might encourage that kind of workshop. Thank you so much. Okay, Mr. Lee and Director Young, um, thank you for joining us. We are going to move on our agenda and look forward to seeing you at some point again in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Next item on our agenda, there are five matters on consent calendar. Madam City Clerk or Ms. Stone, are there any public comments on any of the matters under consent calendar?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there is a public comment from Rafael Menes.
Let's hear it, please.
Rick, so I have comments on items, uh, 7A and 7C. 7A first, on page eight of the agenda packet, I believe you'll find that the minutes for the May 18th meeting stated that the motion by Councilmember Murphy to approve item 7D was passed 5-0. I don't think that's accurate. I believe that vote was actually 3-0-2 with Councilmembers Toms and Salimi abstaining. So I'd like that to be corrected. And then for item 7C, I know that people are probably tired about hearing we talk about the necessity of vaccination. But as item 7C notes, Delta variant is here. It's causing a doubling of the rate of infection among our unvaccinated population and will continue to spread and continue to increase. And also note that Delta has on occasion showed signs of infecting people who have been previously infected because it's much, much more virulent than the base COVID strain. So even if you have been previously infected by COVID, it may be worthwhile to talk to your healthcare providers about whether you can be vaccinated or to improve your natural immunity. Because the mRNA vaccines give it a net immune effectiveness that's around 10 times greater than natural immunity. Which is helpful because Delta's about twice as effect infectious as baseline COVID. So I support the continuation of the state of emergency and thank city staff for rewriting that particular agenda item to make it clear what's being implemented, when it's planned to be discussed in the future and why that's the case. And again, encourage anyone who has not been vaccinated, please to do so because you're greatly at risk for getting the markedly more infectious variant that is spreading within Pinole now and will continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Menes.
Ms. Stone, there are no more public comments.
I'll close the public comment period on, on consent calendar. Councilmembers, any questions related to any of the matters on consent calendar? Councilmember Toms?
Yes, I just wanted to, um, also make that same correction, um, in the minutes. So item 7A should reflect that, um, 7D had two abstentions and that was Toms and Salimi. So whoever makes the motion, um, I'd like to have that correction added.
Thank you, will do.
Thank you, and, um, Mayor, this is City Clerk Yoko. Though that typo has already been corrected, so thank you, we can accept that revision.
Thank you. So if there's no other comments, I'll make the motion to approve the consent calendar with that one notation.
Councilmember Tom, Councilmember Toms, I have a quick question related to item 7B as beta. That's the warrants. There is a relatively large amount reflected on page 11 of 17 in the section that has to do with payments to PG&E, specifically, um, a little over $72,000 associated with 11 tenant. And, um, I wondered about why such an extraordinary amount? Or what, what is that 11 tenant that warrants such an extraordinary amount paid to PG&E? And I apologize to staff because I didn't ask this question earlier, so you may not have the immediate answer. But if you do, I'd welcome it. Let me know, otherwise we'll get back with a response about that.
We will look into that and get back to, I believe that might be related to the wastewater treatment plant. But, um, I'll confirm that for you, which of course is a very significant user of electricity for its blowers and other, uh, uh, equipment. But we'll circle back to the council and confirm that.
Thank you, okay. All right, without any further questions or items to be polled, I will, um, defer to Councilmember Toms, she wanted to make a motion.
Yeah, I'll move approval of the consent calendar with the, just the notation on the minutes.
Thank you, I'll second that. Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm your mayor, uh, city with the assistance of City Clerk. City Clerk, please roll call, vote.
Councilmember Toms?
Yes?
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Tav?
Yes.
Noting for the record that Mayor Protem Salimi is absent, Mayor Martinez-Ribbon.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. We move on to the next item on our agenda and that is, uh, public hearing. And, um, as all business, because we moved this item over from the July 6th meeting, it is about amending the definition of offices, business and professional in section 17.22, 0, 17.22.02, parentheses, F, parentheses, 40 of the Pinole Municipal Code in Chapter 11, definitions in the three-quarter specific plan. And the action before us is to conduct this public hearing and introduce an ordinance per staff's recommendation. Mr. Hannum, are you with us? Yes, you are, there you are.
Yes, I am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I, I wanted to kind of give you an update because a lot of things have happened since I've been on vacation. And the one thing was that the original property owner who had the application originally, uh, sold the property to, to another buyer. And so with that, uh, after talking with the, the new property owner today, who is the property, the, the property is closed escrow from my understanding, is that they do not want to proceed with this rezoning of the property. They have a use that will be a permitted use within the zoning ordinance and really don't, don't want to pursue this. I'm asking that, uh, that we table this item, uh, for a future, for future meetings or, or just table it, indefinitely at this point. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to ask, answer any of your questions, but that's, uh, that's all I have tonight on this item, so.
Okay, thank you for the update, Mr. Hannum. Let's see if there were any public comments based on what was part of the package and maybe answer those. Madam City Clerk or Ms. Stone, are there any public comments on this item?
Madam Mayor, there are no public comments.
Okay, I will close the public comment period. Councilmembers, are there any questions?
No questions.
No questions for you, Mr. Hannum? So it looks like we will, um, just, uh, have no direction to provide because no need for this item as a, um, as part of a public hearing unless I am told otherwise by City Attorney Casher. I see him nodding his head. Okay, so we are going to move on to the next item.
Ms. Mayor?
Councilmember Murphy, pardon me, Councilmember Tate, pardon me. Councilmember, hold on, hold on.
What are we doing?
We are waiting our turn until I say, please proceed. Councilmember, um, Murphy, you had your hand up? Did you have a question?
I was regarding the item on the agenda.
Yes.
I was just making sure, just because I, I understand that there have been different, uh, uh, change in, in, uh, I guess, purchase of property. But I'm just, um, I was just a little bit unclear and I was hoping to get some clarity just because I, it, it's just publicly, it would sound weird that we are changing a ordinance and specifically an ordinance that is related to our three-quarter specific plan because of one person or one applicant. So I just, can you clarify, um, why this would not still be germane to, uh, our city as, you know, the future of our city? Does that, yeah?
Yeah, I can answer that question. The re, the, the original, the original property owner had an, had an intent, at least when he applied for the, for the project, is to, to bring back a dental office back to that piece of property. And as far, and as you're aware, the zoning code doesn't allow that. They would need his own amendment to, to allow that. So because the use, because this property was kind of like a special property and the property owner's use was, was something that was there before, staff came, staff decided that this would be a good use because it's a small property. It's been a use before and I kind of mentioned in the staff report, the options that we had. And so in terms of whether we rezone it to OPMU, whether we CMU or, or keep it PQI. And with the property owner now selling the property and the new property owner, the new property owner wanting to come in and do a use that's permitted with that use, it's, there's not really a reason to, to change the zoning ordinance. And, and the other reason why is that zoning ordinance is even though they are, they are set to be amended. I mean, they're fluid documents, they amend with the flow. In most cases, you want to do that in a more comprehensive manner. We were just trying to help an applicant at this point who, who we thought had a user, that an end user that was looking to do a dental office. And so again, with that use, but in most cases, we would do more a comprehensive zoning ordinance update with, you know, with all of the different, uh, zone districts and all that. And this, and by this owner not wanting to do that, he is now the new owner of the property. And so he did not want to continue that item to, um, to, for, um, for it to continue. So, so that's why I'm asking that we, that we table this item. It doesn't mean that issue would go away with that property. What it means is maybe later in the future that if we, if, you know, we're looking at doing amendments to the specific plan or we're doing a more of a comprehensive look, that we can then bring that property back in and do it accordingly what we need to do. That property is definitely looked at to see, uh, what uses and what other type of uses can be used, you know, at, on that property. So, uh, I think at this point it would be prudent just to, uh, to kind of drop the item, allow the new applicant, the new owner to pursue his permitted use, which we still have to go through the comprehensive designer review process, uh, with any project that he does and, and then move forward and maybe take a look at this property at another time, uh, with, um, with a more comprehensive, uh, look at the zoning ordinance.
Did this code go through the municipal ad hoc committee? I think Councilmember Toms and Councilmember Tate are on it.
This one, this one didn't necessarily go through that committee. So, uh, but I think in the future, uh, I, I will be bringing them back through that committee process. Because I think there could be some other properties or other issues with the zoning code that we could tackle at the same time, uh, that could be more city, that could be more cities, that, that we could take a look at in terms of inconsistency with the zoning ordinance and bring multiple, bring multiple zoning amendments to the council so that along with whatever, uh, is needed for the properties that, that we're, that we're reviewing. So that's, that's what we're looking at right now.
Great, and I'm bringing two questions up because I actually remember something happening similar to this around, um, the Safeway gas station a couple, a year or so ago. And I'm just a little, sometimes I get a little concerned when we, I understand that stories and personal anecdotes and experiences of applicants are going to influence how we change, um, codes and municipal codes. But I do also want us to just be aware of how, both public perception wise, but also obviously internally, the work that needs to be done to change these things. It's, it is a little concerning when like one particular situation ends up changing things. And I think with that, with the case of Safeway, we, we decided to, you know, amend a rule basically allowing for more gas stations in our city just because of one specific applicant. So I just wanted to make sure that, again, like, uh, obviously we're going to defer, you know, defer this for another time. But if you do have these codes, number one, I'd like actually the municipal ad hoc committee to have an opportunity to tap in on these things. Hopefully that would also give people another opportunity to chime in on what's happening. But also, um, you know, I, I want to remain consistent if possible around like when we do have these codes, you know, it's not just because of one applicant, it's actually for the betterment of all applicants in our city. And I didn't necessarily hear that from today's conversation, but I'm looking forward to, again, moving forward that, that being a change. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, thanks for your patience, Councilmember Tav, did you have a question?
Yeah, so I, I just wanted to ask, um, i- i- is, the, the owner can pay for this review, right? Is that what happened here is that there's some type of special review? Or was it something that was, happened administratively and then moved to council?
This was an applicant wanting to propose to change his property. So this wasn't a city initiated, this wasn't a city initiated application, it was an applicant-driven application.
I see, okay.
So, yeah.
Yeah, so we would just have to, to Councilmember Murphy's point, look at how we, how this process goes and make sure that we, we make it so that one person doesn't change our entire municipal code and short circuits on another property somewhere else. Ms. Mayor, what I wanted to, thank you for the report. What I wanted to do is make sure that we had a motion and a second and a vote to table this indefinitely. And City Attorney, is that the appropriate process?
Yeah, for, for the purposes of record, that is the cleanest way to do it, so if you'd like to propose a motion.
Ms. Mayor, if I may?
You're sure?
Okay. I'd like to motion to table item 8A indefinitely, to be reviewed at a later date.
I'll second that.
Okay, now discussion. My, my, my first reaction to that motion is, isn't there, isn't that a contradictory statement? If we, if we table it indefinitely until a later date as needed, it's contradictory. So I'm going, yeah, anyway, that's my question to you.
Okay, my answer would be that I think everyone got the point, and we would just need a vote, right?
Yeah, well, I think you wanted to be clear and, and proceed as necessary. So I would request that you word your motion, so that we understand that the item could come up in the future, but at this time, we want to table it.
Motion to table item 8A indefinitely.
And I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? I think this, this item, this matter may come up again, so I would, I would support it if it wasn't indefinite.
So if I may, if this, if we need to reconsider this item, it can be brought back. I mean, as Dave mentioned, this was a property owner-initiated effort. It's actually not that uncommon for development projects to require consideration of changes to overarching plans, municipal codes. It's quite unusual in other aspects, in relation to other aspects of the municipal code. But for planning-related matters, it's actually quite a common occurrence. So to have a single property owner approach the city with a proposal for a project that the applicant knows is going to require some changes out of the municipal code or some other plan, is actually pretty common in planning. So I just want to make that note, this isn't really, that is kind of a standard practice. But I don't think, we don't foresee that this is going to need to come back to us. If it does, we can schedule it as a new item, so I think it's perfectly fine to just, from staff's perspective, just have it tabled.
So are you suggesting the motion be, let's just table this item?
The motion as revised by Councilmember Tave, yes. Table the motion, the item.
Just table the motion, okay.
Bye.
No, just table the item.
Ms. Mayor, I'd like to call for a vote.
Can you repeat the motion, please?
I'd like to motion to table 8A indefinitely.
Yeah, I see City Attorney Cacher nodding, oh, that's acceptable. I'm having trouble with the word indefinitely, because to me it means forever, knowing that it will come back.
Mayor, this is City Clerk Yoko, I think typically we can have a motion to table to a date certain or to an unspecified date. So if that's helpful, I think what is intended is that we're going to table to an unspecified date, is that helpful?
It is helpful to me, yes. And does it have the same intent, Council, City Attorney Cacher?
I believe so, I mean indefinitely is kind of an unlimited or unspecified amount of time, so I think it means the same thing.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. All right then, in that case. Okay, if no further discussion, oh, was there something else?
We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Toms, we just need a call to vote.
Yes. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Toms?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Tave?
Yes.
Noting for the record that Mayor Protem Salimi is absent, Mayor Martinez-Ribbon.
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. Councilmember Tave, thank you.
My pleasure, Ms. Mayor.
Well, thanks for getting us through it, all right. Now we move on to the second, the next item on our agenda, and also moved from a prior meeting. And that is a council member request for additional appropriations in fiscal year 2122. We're here to discuss, provide direction, and adopt a resolution per staff recommendations. Director Guillory, do you have a report for us?
Sure, so to frame the item, this is a continuation from the last meeting. On June 29th, the City Council did adopt the fiscal year 202122 budget. And at that time, a number of additions were made to the budget. And it currently includes the revised final proposed budget, it was presented at that time. It also includes all of the additional capital improvement plan projects at their full cost in the first year. So they're all included at full cost in fiscal year 202122, as opposed to spreading the cost over a number of fiscal years. It also includes the defunding or removal of the Faria House renovations. There was an appropriation for 500,000 that's in the budget at that time, and staff was directed to remove that from the budget. And then lastly, it included a number of additions that were added at that time. That included the total compensation for the study, the benchmarking study for management and confidential employees. Also economic development consulting services, the weatherization and energy efficiency program. And then in the Measure S 2014 fund, the additional items were moving the two community safety officers from half-time to full-time equivalents. Also included, one call consultants to advance a number of the capital improvement projects. And then we set up two reserves at $10,000 each, one for the revitalization, and then one for business development slash community help. So all of those items were added. In the general fund, we're proposing to use $2.3 million of unassigned fund balance. In the Measure S 2014 fund, we're proposing to use $1.7 million of unassigned fund balance, for a total of 4.4 million of unassigned fund balance between all of the general funds, which is general fund and the Measure S funds. Also should be noted again that this is separate from the city's general reserve, which has a balance of about $8.7 million. One other item that was added back to the budget, much smaller in scale, was adding back the .75 full-time equivalents to the PCTV division. That was inadvertently removed from the budget, so it has since been added back. So it added .75 FTE to the total FTEs in the budget. And that cost was just under $10,000, at about $9,500 for the part-time staff. So with that, that concludes my report, and I'm available for questions and comments.
Thank you. Let's see if there are any public comments on this item, Ms. Stone or Madam City Clerk. And then after hearing any, I'll turn to council.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have public comments, we'll first hear from Rafael Menes.
So, my comments are, on this particular item is, I would suggest that it may be worthwhile to at the least not expend all of the funds that are not currently allocated to the reserve, and therefore could be viewed as available funds. Because so far, the process of the council allocating funds has been done in a sort of ad hoc manner. A council member brings up items, the council votes on them, we move on to the next item. And while each individual item, or even each group of items, might very well be a good idea, the downside of doing things that way is that it leaves less funds available if, say, for example, one of the various planning processes that the city is running right now says, it would be a good idea for us to spend funds on this, or on this, or on this. But those funds aren't necessarily there anymore, because the council allocated those funds to whatever the council thought was appropriate collectively. So I guess I have two suggestions here. First, consider the cost of implementing changes in an ad hoc process rather than a more structured and planned process through city staff. And second, if this process is going to go forward, I'd suggest it might be worthwhile to have a round robin sort of process for council bringing up items. So that it's not one council member brings up, all their items have been on to the next, have been on to the next. But it goes, one council member brings up an item, then the next council member brings up an item, then the next council member brings up an item. And that way, there would still be equal opportunity to all the council members for items to be brought up, without necessarily need to have every single item brought up and laid out before there was a vote taken on all the items together, which I believe was the point of conflict in the earlier discussion. And that's my comments on this item, thank you for your consideration.
Okay, we now have public comment from Irma Ruport.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
I'm sorry, thank you. I've got a couple of comments. Cable TV, essential. I don't understand why it's so low in the poll of priority. I think we need to add more funds. Cable TV used to be a lot better, our channels 26 and 28 were a lot useful for our community. We did a lot more for it in the past, Dave Snell's been excellent. He almost has 25 years here working with us, he's super. I don't know why we don't bring him to the table, and I get suggestions. Remove cable TV from your current community services, move it to the Office of City Manager. Make it independent like it was before years ago, when we had a better opportunity to make it viable, and a lot better than what it is today. It's really gone to pots, and I, and I say with a new city manager, and new council, let's put it up to what it used to be. Davis, excellent, have him give us ideas, bring him to the table. He's been pushed up in the closet, I think we need to bring him back to what he was, he's excellent at what he does. The next thing I want to add is the city clerk. Deputy clerk should start doing transcribing on these notes, bring him up to speed. We're missing that. And nothing to do, to say about the city clerk, Heather Ayup is doing great. But she needs help, and let's put help where we need it the best. The other thing is, we're hiring people. Make sure we don't hire people as our friends, our neighbors, or whatever. We need people qualified that can do the job, and make sure that they are the people that you need in the city, doing the work that they're supposed to. And, and the next thing I want to add is communication, very poor. The city is doing a bad job in communication. Like I said, we need to work on that. And the next thing is, I know we're going to get some money coming in from the government. Make, itemize the list, put restrictions on it and what they're for, and put it out in the public, so that we'll know the kind of monies we're getting. I know we're going to get some monies for public safety, maybe for police and fire, maybe we can do something about that. The next thing, the Faria House has 1.4 million, and I guess it's going to be on the unfunded, unassigned, is that's going to be tabled? How about putting Station 74 instead of Faria? Okay, we need public safety mandatory, a must in the city, everybody's been asking about that. And you guys all were campaigning for Station 74. Maybe not to be open, but to use a public safety building which we own, the city owns it, we need to bring it up to speed. Thank you, have a good night.
Madam Mayor, there are no more public comments.
Thank you, I'll close the public comment period on this, and thanks all for your public comments, and some suggestions were made there regarding the process that we went through for appropriations in the past two meetings. This year has been a, this year in, pardon, last year, most of last year has been, there has included a lot of new experiences, including the new composition of the council, as well as new strategies being implemented, and new approaches or processes that have been undertaken. And among those, even though the budget approval process is, is not entirely new, there has been a newness about it with the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan included, at a much earlier date than we had been accustomed to seeing, and either went on council or as a resident. So we've incorporated a lot of new practices, and as it goes with the first attempt at going through them, as we did this time around, we had a few hiccups. So the suggestions about round robin is something that, you know, having every council member present their, their list of interest. Well, I know that we attempted to do single interests and then group them, and so we went by, that was sort of a, an organic kind of discussion that occurred, and I think we did as well as we could, given the time that we had to digest the new process, work with each other. And also the lag that occurs via Zoom. So if I don't hear your call upon you right away, it's because, you know, there is this lag that keeps us from reacting or adding on to our individual comments, as might have occurred if we were in live, you know, live, live at the, in chambers. So all of that somehow influences the way we make decisions, and here we are now. So tonight is an opportunity for those council members who were not heard, given that we did go first in order, having started with Mayor Protem and his list. We now will hear from other council members who have not yet specifically identified any appropriations that they are interested in having council hear and vote on. So I believe that includes Councilmember Toms and Councilmember Tave? I think you had started that as well, but we didn't finish with you, and myself. So, Councilmember Toms, we'll begin with you.
Thank you. I wanted to just say that this budget process has been a little bit difficult for me to really understand the, you know, the process in which we took. During the first six months, we had a report done by, I think it was Management Partners, or there was a consultant that helped us figure out about the needs for staffing. And out of those recommendations, staff put forward those positions into the budget. Then we had the fire station, fire study, and a recommendation was put into the budget. Then we come in, and it was maybe 12:30 at night, we're getting ideas on, let's fund a half-time person here. Let's do this, you know, weatherization program, let's do this and that. And what troubled me is that that kind of discussion should happen in a, you know, like a study session back in the beginning of June for all of us. We shouldn't wait till, you know, the last minute, and all of a sudden, it's 10 minutes before, you know, we have to vote to extend a meeting. Now, what I would propose, what I would rather do, is leave more money into the unassigned buckets. And so when we have the report on, you know, how are we doing on our sustainability commission? And, you know, because I would think right now, we should probably fund, have a climate action plan. But I'm not going to bring that up at the very, you know, during this time. What I would like to do is bring that up when we have the climate, climate issues and the status of the sustainability element brought to us. And then it could be our recommendation to, okay, yes, we do need to move forward on doing a climate action plan, because that is one of the action items that we haven't done yet. And, and then have staff come back and tell us, okay, here's about what you want to cost. And then on the quarterly budget updates, then include it. But I am really troubled with the, you know, at midnight, it's, it's my turn, so I'm going to add this on to my shopping list. I think that it, you know, every item that we add, that we do sort of our appropriations that haven't been through staff, that haven't previously been discussed at a council meeting, that if we leave funds in the unassigned, then when we have those reports, that if we leave funds in the unassigned, then when we have those reports or those discussions, then we can go, okay, well, you know, in eight weeks, we're going to do a quarterly, you know, our quarterly budget update, and that's when we do it. So I agree with Raphael that, you know, the ad hoc approach is, it's not really a good practice in my mind. So I don't have anything I'd like to add now, but I would like to say that when we get our, have our discussions on these various items, I would then like to say, okay, can we then have a budget appropriation for this, that, or the other thing? After we've had adequate discussion on the need. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. I will echo that and I appreciated the comment, the public comment, it was with Mr. Menace, that distinguished the ad hoc approach versus the planned structured approach, which is good practice, which gives a rationale as to why the request for certain appropriations. On some of them, their requests, there was a history. And even that wasn't listened to by council members, which is unfortunate. Because after having heard public comment, extensive public comment, a particular item, you know, that also brings into question, what is it that council is here to do? If it's not meant to be responsive to the entire community. I think also that there is a degree, a larger degree of uncertainty when there is an appropriation that is simply a placeholder, which I believe is why the amounts for PCTV are as low as they are. I know that I asked about that. And yes, they are placeholders because I believe staff is still looking to see, you know, where the best use of funds as needed after some reflection and reassessment would be found. So thanks for those comments. I share the concern about simply allotting funds when there isn't an understanding about why a certain amount or a certain item is being asked for. That takes us away from what staff is here to do, which is to offer their expertise and input in helping analyze the need for, the need for a particular way to use public funds. Council Member Murphy.
I think Tave was before.
I will take, for people, pardon me, I'm going to, I'm going to, sorry, I'm going to go to Council Member Tave. I think there was something remaining for him and then come back to you. Thank you.
Oh, I know that at 1:30 in the morning, we're trying to get as much done as we can and as possible. And I think that we, you know, by tabling this discussion, or not tabling, but moving into the next meeting was probably the best thing we did that evening. And I think there's a lot of stuff that I have on my list and it's a lot of stuff that has been pending for years. So it's not something that, you know, another meeting would, would, you know, matter too much other than it would give the public a chance to have a longer, better discussion. I can justify some of these with our, with our plan, you know, the strategic plan that we came up with that has a lot of good points in there. I know all of these tie right into it. I would just suggest, as I suggested before, and I think Council Member Murphy suggested before, that, and it seems like we're all in agreement, to maybe just have a workshop where we can get all these on the table, listen to the public comment. There might be a great idea like Mr. Menace just threw out at us, that it's sitting in the audience, that we should, we should give the opportunity or afford the opportunity for that to happen. I have relatively small requests because a lot of the things that I'm passionate about, I know many of you are passionate about as well. So it's, they're going to come out. It's just how do we execute this is the bigger discussion? And how do we prioritize these items? I think that's also the bigger discussion after we get everything on the table. Whether it's this meeting, I think that we still need to be able to have a space for us to talk about all of this. As we saw with recycled water, you can tell I'm passionate about it. But I think it's the future of that plan. And I know it's already committed to by this body, but there's a lot more discussions, one happening tomorrow apparently, that we need to have. So I'm in support of a workshop, that's carefully looking at this. Sorry, the baby's still, but us carefully looking at this and really diving into the details and finding out what we're going to do over the next four years or so, or what the direction we're going to have over the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I may add to your comments, Council Member Tave, one key thing that you said was the execution of this. Now, I'm not sure whether this, with this, you meant what, the execution for things, related to things for which there are already appropriations. But let's keep in mind that we have to allow for that as well. And we're just getting to, you know, having additional staff to help out with that. So.
Thank you for adding that. I want to also say that there's another good thing, but more discussion is going to be needed when the 3.6 million comes from the rescue plan, which is going to accelerate some of these projects. So I just want to, we have a lot going on really fast for Penole. But I just want to make sure that we, that we are very careful about those spaces and prioritization. As we could see, things get thrown at us and having that available funding is important. And it gives our staff a flexibility to maneuver as things change over time. So I just want to say that that space is desperately needed and I'm hoping that all of you are in agreement.
Well, and I think we've all experienced this budget process as a group and we're going to remain the same group as we go through the discussion for the ARPA funds. So that will also allow us to do a little better, not necessarily perfect. Because the use of those public funds is not entirely up to us. It's, there are eligibility criteria for that. And we'll hear more about that from Director Guillory and City Manager Guillory in due time. Council Member Murphy.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, thank you all, council members, for your comments. I appreciate them and I, I don't hear any requests. So just speaking and continuing conversation here, I want to reiterate that I've several times mentioned a need for a study session on these items. And I think many of us have priorities that both overlap and some that don't. It seems that my requests have not been, you know, approved by consensus by council. So I want to reiterate that I'm open to having a study session on several of these issues, both on a Tuesday meeting or a Saturday meeting. We all have to have the political will to actually make that happen. But this is not something that, you know, I hear in your comments and I've heard before that, you know, we, there's this need for a study session for us to break down these larger concepts. I'm open to it. Let's do it. We have to have the political will as a council to make it happen. And that means that we all have to agree to a date and a time to do it. So I just want to open that back up and say, let's make it happen. Secondly, I also want to say that I appreciate, and this is both to staff, to the public and to council, I always appreciate our staff's ability to give us facts, to give us data, to give us staff reports that allow us to do our jobs better. I also want to say that staff are not the only subject matter experts that we listen to as a council. Each and every one of us can listen to other folks. And I just want to be clear that sometimes there are members of the public with a lot of wisdom and a lot of knowledge. Sometimes there are people that we, as council members, go to ourselves to understand some of these subject matters. And that is okay. Our job as council members is to give policy direction and budgetary direction. And so when I'm, when we do have these ideas, this notion of, you know, you know, waiting for a plan to happen, which I think is great and I think is necessary, sometimes we just need to move on, move the mountain, right? We need to move on some of these items. And so I look to, for example, our strategic plan as a prime opportunity to say, that was a great, right, initiative that previous councils started on. And City Manager Murray, you've done a tremendous job at moving those pieces of our strategic plan. And also, one of the things that we can acknowledge is that the strategic plan actually has missed the mark on certain things like a climate action plan, like sustainability efforts. And so when we do have plans that move us forward, but still lack certain understandings, certain equity positions, it's really important that as council members, we intervene and interject in that. And so I want to say that I know that some of you seem to be, I don't know if you are upset, I don't know really what the word is, you're questioning kind of the process thus far around some of these ideas. I personally feel like some of the notions about, about some of the ideas I've made motions on have been questioned. But the reality is that we actually have missed the mark on some of our plans in the past. And so sometimes there is an opportunity to intervene in that and interject in that and propose solutions. And again, I just want to say, I am open to having a study session. I'm also open to ensuring that we can present ideas and then we can actually work backwards to those ideas. It's actually a great opportunity to have placeholders, that a budget is a prioritization of our values. And so if we do have placeholders, that's an opportunity to say, okay, this is something that the council sees as important. Now staff can have some kind of leeway in a budget to work with, to work backwards on that. I'm not saying that always has to happen. As we mentioned before, we have a number of strategic plans. We also have a number of plans that have not been executed yet, including our economic development plan, including our strategic communications plan. But meanwhile, what we do know is that certain proposed solutions are not being funded the way they should probably be funded. We've heard tonight, Penole Television as an example of that. And so we have to, I think we have to be a little bit more visionary and maybe perhaps innovative as to how we look at this budget process. And also, again, maybe we do have to have a study session where folks are comfortable having these conversations more broadly, in a way that also doesn't silence voices, i.e. saying that only three council members today have an opportunity to talk instead of all four who are on this call. So I just want to make sure that's clear. And also, I just want to say lastly, that I do think the ARPA conversation, the American Rescue Plan Act, is a great opportunity to expand on this budget conversation. Director Guillory and City Manager Murray, thank you for, you know, keeping that in our foresight and just making sure we understand that that's a part of the broader budget cycle. I want the public to know that this is not a closed off conversation to anyone. No matter what a particular council member thinks or says, I think it's really important that we have this kind of ongoing consensus of like how we communicate these ideas and talk about the budget process. So I just wanted to say that and close up those loops. But again, I don't have any requests today, but I'm thankful for this item being on the agenda and this conversation.
I just want to be clear about the way we were initially going to approach this discussion was based on what we, how we had proceeded last time. And as you can see, or, you know, things, comments are inserted, not things, pardon me, comments are inserted. And that's where we end up with a discussion that's a little differently. So it's not a matter of silencing, it's a matter of proceeding as we had, as I believed had initially thought we would do. And then, as I think you also realize, I am flexible enough to continue proceeding as I see the discussion developing. And so thank you for understanding that. Council Member Tave?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, moving forward, is it something that City Manager would and Finance Director would kind of craft this, this, sorry, this study session? Or is it something, and then we would get a date from you guys as to how we're going to do that? I can rattle off my ideas, but I think it's just going to be kind of lost on, a lot of them may have some discussion, but they're very simple. And I mean, I'm just wondering if it's something that we, we would just hear back from the City Manager, we schedule it?
Sure. So thanks for the question. Yeah, we can certainly provide our thoughts on how to structure a special council meeting that's more in a workshop format. So what, you know, when we say workshop or study session, it means different things to different people. Sometimes the term study session is used to imply that no decisions are made. It's just kind of an informational discussion. So I don't think we mean it in quite that sense because I think that the outcome would be some decisions by the council on a different appropriation, you know, appropriations. So we might want to call it a workshop. And that kind of connotes a less formal structure than a typical council meeting that might allow more dialogue and input from community members than our standard public comment process. So Director Guillory and I are certainly happy to propose a format for a workshop for this issue in particular. We can certainly, of course, also have workshops on other issues. This, you know, the budget development process in particular, I think, is there are so many possibilities that can be placed on the table and so much dialogue that is, can be had to sort through them all. It's a particularly good topic for a workshop. So I'm happy to propose that. In terms of the scheduling, I suppose what we would do is think about the kind of the planning timeline that's required to prepare for that and start to pull the council for some dates and times, you know, that are in that time period when we think we'll be able to prepare. And we can, again, propose some, a different format. We have had some workshops. We had a workshop regarding the strategic plan a while ago. That's the most recent that I can think. Well, we also had a workshop related to our annual work plan back in January. We can look at what other cities have done. I will note that the process that the city followed for the development of this budget is the process that's used in the past and is a really, really common and traditional process. I think that we have, you know, varying, some new council members and varying perspectives as, you know, there's more ideas and more discussion that's needed in this budget process than perhaps has been the case in the past. So I think having a workshop to conclude the appropriations process would be great. The council can consider whether it wants to combine that workshop with a workshop on the ARPA funds or not, where you want to have two separate ones. I can see some value in having one workshop because you can have a long list of desirable projects and you can go through a process of sorting and identifying what would be fundable by ARPA versus the general fund as opposed to having two disjointed discussions. So that's a possibility for the council to consider now and provide direction. So we would be happy to take direction in the form of a motion and order from the council to prepare an agenda for a future council workshop on appropriations and/or ARPA and to come back with proposal and some proposed dates for council's consideration. And Director Guillory, if you have anything you'd like to add to that, please do so.
Anything to add?
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks for your.
Mayor, this is City Clerk Yeo, who I just wanted to check with staff then that we don't need any action on this resolution that's been presented. I just want to clarify that with Director Guillory. I think that is this, this was placed here in case we had additional appropriations, but there's no action needed on the resolution that was brought forward?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's correct if the council doesn't want to act on any appropriations.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to clarify. Thanks so much.
Thanks.
Okay, so it seems like we're not going to act on any appropriations tonight. But because we've had the discussion about wanting time to discuss, let's hear about that, since we're on kind of related topic here, in response to City Manager's comments about the different approaches or formats that can be taken. Council Member Murphy, did you have any suggestions?
I do. Of course, thank you again, City Manager Murray. I would love to, I would love date options around this workshop session. I also did want to re, I mentioned two things. One, the workshop session in the past or the study session I mentioned. But also I did mention the idea of utilizing the Balancing Act, which is a public participatory budgeting tool. I was hoping to use that around ARPA particularly, but I think because we're just in the phase of just really engaging the community around the budget and it seems like, you know, engaging ourselves around the budget, I think it would be a very valuable tool as surveying folks and just seeing what folks are really buying, you know, what they're buying into and what they need more information about. As I'm sure our city staff and it seems like council members need more information about some of certain ideas, I think like we can use that tool as a way to really survey folks in the public around what interests them, what they still have questions about. And obviously, all of this data would be available to us as a council so that we can understand how to answer those questions better. I would, you know, I know I sent you all the tool, City Manager Murray and Director Guillory, but I think this is a prime time to elevate that tool and activate it. And I'd be happy to make a motion if necessary for, you know, I think the overall usage for the tool was like two years, $10,000 or something like that. So I don't know if you need that kind of direction or if that's already in the budget. I think you all mentioned that was already something you were looking into. But I'd love, I'd love a response just to make sure.
Yeah, so I'd have to double check the procurement policy. So the way that procurement and government agencies works is a little bit different from... So the the way that procurement and government agencies works is a little bit different from how we do it in our own lives or in private industry. Um, there's a philosophy that basically getting business from a government entity is a benefit to a business and you need to offer that potential benefit to different firms that are interested. And so um we, the i- in general, the procurement policy doesn't allow what we call sole source procurement, which means we just go and find a vendor. It, well, the way it traditionally works is we identify a need. We identify firms that can meet that need. We advertise that opportunity to those firms. We get proposals. For small amounts of money, there's a a more streamlined process. So um, as Director Guillory and I expressed, we're very interested and supportive of using a tool like the Balancing Act. Um, whether it's that tool in particular or some other tool that has comparable uh functionality, we'd certainly love to roll that out. So uh, I don't want to, I don't think we need any uh appropriation at this time. Um, we'd love to use a tool like that and we'll look into some options uh and come back to the council with a a proposal on that.
Great.
Pardon, I keep turning off my video because I keep getting a message about poor internet access. Um, so Councilmember Tate?
Uh, to kind of piggyback on that, I what, I I was wondering, and I mean, this is very important as everyone knows, but there's also the money, but the resources to actually do the job. Is there a way for us to to? And I know Andrew, that's saying, saying no, right? It's it's not, but I mean, in that workshop, we have to be able to say, hey, we've hit capacity and passed it. Or we're going to need a contractor to pick something like that up and and that might push our timeline out. I mean, I I just, we're going to put a lot on the table and I just want to manage expectations for our community and and the council um on what we can and can't do and what one-time funds really do to us long term, right? And I, I know it's it's a tough balancing act, but you gave us a presentation a while back with um with a chart in it uh when we were doing our um our workshop together as council. Uh, the norms, I think it was, where it showed where the line was, where all the work that staff can do. And then when you go over that, it's just not, that's work that's just not going to get done, right? Um, I just want to make sure that we're we're balancing our day-to-day operations plus this extra ask and what strategies you might have to to meet that, to meet that ask um as we move forward.
Yeah, so.
I I don't know if it's like a later date, but.
Okay, well, I mean, I I do want to respond to that. Thanks for asking that question because that's one of the ingredients that needs to go into the the mix is the staff availability. And um, I'm very grateful um that the staff considered the findings of some of our recent analyses, including the organizational assessment and FIRE study. Um, and approved as part of the budget some additional positions that are uh really necessary for the city to be able to achieve the vision outlined in the strategic plan. Um, we've talked a little bit about the critical path for achieving some of those um strategies, service improvements, programs. Um, and it does, a lot of it does flow through the new department heads that we're going to be recruiting. So um, as you know, we're going to be recruiting a new um uh Community Development Director, that's underway, and New Public Works Director, that's underway. We'll soon be recruiting a new Human Resources Director. Um, and so it's, we have some interim staff who are here on a part-time basis handling some of those activities. Um, so the the um unfortunate answer is that we really probably are not going to have a good sense of what our bandwidth is until those new department heads are seated, which is probably, you know, mid-September at the earliest. They can take stock of what the, you know, the the staff requirements are just to meet the basic operations and to meet the special projects. Um, and we need to really circle back. There were some things that were added, um, all worthy things in, you know, staff's perspective that were appropriated at the end of the budget process that just weren't anticipated by staff. And so we need to take a look at those things, figure out how to operationalize them, go back to the council to talk about prioritization and scheduling. Um, so we haven't had that um opportunity. So I think, but on the other hand, I don't want to defer important decision-making and investment by the council in particularly in the appropriation of the ARPA funds, some of which might not take a lot of staff time. So I think the path forward is to have a dialogue through a workshop to talk about additional general fund appropriations as well as the ARPA, if you would like to have that combined, to create basically a list of um, you know, desirable additional projects by the council. Um, you know, that, we probably won't have that, you know, workshop and those decisions made until, you know, for another, you know, for another month or so. Um, somewhat soon thereafter, hopefully, we'll have the new department heads or we'll work with the interims to figure out what's uh possible and circle back to the council to confirm a new schedule, basically. Um, so we do really need to take that time in. Um, it's uh, you know, it's unfortunate that we're going through a reorganization and adding some much-needed staff right now because um we have a lot of pent-up demand to do some great new things and the council has some really great visionary ideas. We have some new resources in the ARPA funds. Um, and we just need to get some of the bandwidth uh and infrastructure in place. So that's going to result in a little bit of a delay, but soon we'll be off and running. So I think it's fine to have a workshop within, say, the next four to six weeks uh to get council's direction and then soon thereafter, work with the existing depart- the the new department heads to figure out what the schedule for those things is going to be.
Well, thank you, thank you, councilmembers and City Manager. I think if we um listen to this recording, you'll probably find the objectives of that single workshop um in all that you said, um, City Manager Murray. And um, I would say as well that it it's not going to take a single workshop to get through all the discussion that the council would like to have. Um, I think what, part of what we experienced during the budget appropriations part of our meetings, past two meetings, two meetings ago, was um that although we all have um an idea that we're trying, that we're doing well or want to do something better for panel, we 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 differ on approach. And even that discussion uh needs to be had. Um, with regard to statements about, you know, the appropriations reflect our values, I would say that they're not entirely, all of the values of panel residents aren't entirely reflected in the appropriations as of now. And so I would hope that our councils, uh, my fellow council members are open to hearing more on that. And um, that also that they are open to uh recognizing that um, the process to identify what projects uh are going to actually be carried out for which either staff resources or appropriations funding, public funding is going to be allotted, whether it be from our um general fund or from ARPA funds or who knows what else is going to come down the line. It's not, it's not, doesn't all happen in a single instance, in a single workshop, in a single year. Um, it's it's, you know, it's, there are waves to this. Um, partly because of how funding comes down, down the pipe, whether it's state or federal and because of the timing of those resources. Um, we're not, um, also say that that not everything is under our control. Um, nice to have a plan and also rec- to recognize that there may may be some changes as as we have all experienced already between last, last meeting and now. Um, so with regard to um a workshop, um, let's be specific about what we're going to, what's going to come out of that workshop, both for council members and the public. Not that there can't be two purposes for it, but I think that's probably where the planning about why a workshop, what its purpose, what do we want to get out of it also needs to be a specific enough that people understand, um, you know, it's it's its potential and its limitations. Um, I had a um conversation with uh City Clerk Yopu about, you know, the the format that our meetings take. And I think with our council members, I think at some point I've also had comments with you about how the format of our discussions don't necessarily allow us to have that engagement even among us to understand where we're coming from, if you will, you know, or why we say what we say. Um, and so there are limitations to what we can do, what we will accomplish. And I think again, being overt about that uh will help manage those public expectations as well as our own about what's going to come out of this. Um, I concur with the need for some additional time beyond our usual council format with the discussions. Uh, I think tonight uh is is an example of how we can bounce back and forth. And after having made a decision of not, not doing something, not appropriating funds, we are a little bit more relaxed and open about the comments that we're making. And I think that's the kind of atmosphere that we want as well in in an initial workshop. Thanks for listening. All right, so um, have we had enough discussion? Um, staff, City Manager, and um about the direction that we want to take? Or would you like to see a specific motion coming out of um this discussion? Either now or as an agenda item request?
So I'm uh, it's the, I believe it's clear to me, so uh the, we're happy to accept the direction that we uh prov- uh propose a workshop um to address the additional general fund and all funds appropriations as well as ARPA appropriations that will um be in a more um uh interactive format that will include the use of some tools for community engagement on budget prioritization. Um, and the goals will be gathering community input, um, responding to community questions and comments, I think, would be, would be an important part and allowing time for discussion of the council members and ultimately decisions on some additional appropriations. Is that, and if that's uh the case, I'm happy to accept that direction by nod of heads. Uh, and we can also um uh table this, uh, you know, have a motion to uh table this item uh to a time uncertain.
Thank you. I'd like to, I, I'm still, I'm still a little, pardon me, I'm still a little um cautious about the last goal and that's decision-making. Because the, to allow us to have the discussion, the um exchange among us as well as the input from the public is a step in a s- uh in in our usual way of 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 conducting publicly funded planning processes, which is let's assess, let's find out what what is out there. What what is it that people are thinking of, public and council? Let's process that, which means workshop is had sometime in between until the next phase of that, which would allow for the decision-making ba- based on the input that we acquired uh from the discussion that ensued amongst us as well as from the input engagement of the public. And also with uh the recognition that at some point, we're also going to get an update about where, where the status of our, of our um revenues and our expenditures uh in the first quarter, after the first quarter. So, you know, timing that as well, which again, for me, it means not deciding at that initial workshop, but soon after that.
So from my perspective, you can have a workshop in which you receive all the input, have time to deliberate and digest and potentially the council will be prepared to make some decisions at that time. But if the council would prefer to make it uh certain at this point that there's, you know, it's a series of two workshops. The first is just information gathering and dialogue and a second workshop is for decision-making. I think that's a fine approach as well. So it's really at the, and we're happy to do whatever council would uh prefer.
Okay, so you've heard my my piece. I would favor the sec- the latter, the second, the two-parter. Because whether it's twelve-thirty at night or four hours into a workshop, there's a lot of information to be had, to be listened to, to hear, to to actually listen and process that. So that's why I say that. Uh, Director Guillory?
Yes, I just wanted to add in terms of timing. I think the lateral approach is also best because we will have had the year-end um review as well, and so the numbers will be trued up a little bit more than they are now. And then also it's around the first quarter um update too. So it aligns with uh us truing up the numbers because they are approximations at this point.
Thank you.
Point that out.
Thank you. Okay, councilmembers, um, we're proceeding then? Councilmember Tate?
Yeah, do we need a motion to do that or is it just consensus fine?
Consensus, we've heard enough discussion, I think. I think we're all understanding we want additional time for discussion and 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 City Manager has noted the direction ac- quite accurately and has also modified um for additional comments to have a two-parter.
Wonderful.
Give me a nod of heads for a two-parter, which is totally agreeable to staff. Not a heads, council, yes?
You got it.
Great, awesome, yep, so we'll look on that. Thank you, Director Guillory, for those good thoughts.
Thank you. All right, we move on to the next item on our agenda. And that's Reports and Communications. Interestingly, there were no committee meetings that I had between our last meeting and and today, so I don't have anything to report. And my co- uh my announcements would be uh for the public to continue uh adhering to public health guidelines about distancing, masking, and if you've not yet received a COVID vaccine, to consider that. As uh we heard from public comment, as well as we continue hearing from news worldwide, national and local, and our own um continued declaration of a public health emergency, there's still a lot to be done before we're over this pandemic. So please, please stay safe and um and and remain healthy, which is, which is first and foremost. Um, that's it for me. Um, no council or mayor or appointments tonight. And City Council Committee Reports and Communications, in keeping with our procedures, about a two-minute uh time period for that. Um, Mayor Protem isn't here tonight, so I will turn to Councilmember Murphy, please.
Sure, um, just a few things. I would like to invite the public to a coffee and conversation this Sunday at nine AM. It's via Zoom. Um, you can find the information on my website. I usually do host these on the third Sunday of the month, but I wasn't feeling too good on Sunday. So um, my next coffee and conversation is going to be this Sunday. Um, again, at nine AM via Zoom. Um, would love any and everyone to attend. Um, and I am doing it via Zoom because of the the surge right now. I think it's the probably safest thing for us to do. Um, two other things, um, on the MCE Clean Energy front, we just recently had a board meeting. Um, very exciting updates. Uh, number one is you probably have, well, maybe some have seen, some have not, probably seen a number of ads. Um, MCE is launching the MCE Cares campaign, um, which kind of has gone in tandem with our um cost relief program. So a couple of months ago, I talked to you all about um us allocating ten million dollars for cost relief to customers. Uh, that's been a very successful program of, uh, thirty-five percent of eligible customers have done. I I've basically gone through this program and gotten some COVID nineteen relief um for their utility rates. But again, that's not uh everybody. So if you were someone watching this or you know someone watching this who's has been having a tough time this last year, please opt in to the MCE Cares program. It's a relief program to help you, um, and it is accessible for you, but you do have to opt in. So you have to go to mcecleanenergy.org in order to do that. Um, but that being said, MCE Cares is also launching a program to push climate action on a number of fronts. Obviously, for its uh, you know, cities and and members to do so, but also just for folks to understand the power of of choosing cleaner energy. So if you are someone who's watched an ad, um, you're probably getting inundated with ads now, but it is really a great uh program just to learn more about MCE and the work that they're doing. Um, on that same front, I just wanted to let um council and staff know, if you don't, that SB six twelve, uh, which is a bill that this council has written a letter of support around, actually became a two-year bill. Um, there was some struggles on the front, um, more so from um not having a Assembly Public Utilities Committee um hearing, so that bill actually became a two-year bill at the end of the last, at at the end of the last legislative session. Um, but hopefully, we will uh be, you know, fighting forward with that bill, seeing that that's a great way for uh customers of MCE to not actually have to deal with the exit of 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 being from PGA to MCE. Um, and that being said, our next executive committee is on August sixth. So if you're interested, that is all live streamed on mcecleanenergy.org's website. Um, and if, and lastly, I just wanted to remind folks about tomorrow's Bay Area um air quality management district meeting. Um, it starts at eight AM. They will be discussed, uh, dis- discussing a proposal uh for rule six point five, a measure to reduce health destroying particulate matter um from the Chevron Richmond and PBF Martinez refineries. Uh, this has been kind of a conversation. A lot of articles have been in the San Francisco Chronicle and other New East Bay Times and other newspapers. Um, but if you'd like to hear more about it, it is tomorrow at eight AM. Um, the information, I believe, is on the Bay Area Quality Management District website. Um, and again, this is just something important for those of us who are, you know, interested in just fighting for clean air. So just wanted to update you all on that. And again, I also say, please stay safe, get vaccinated if you can, um, and just be kind to one another and see each other.
Thank you. I know, if 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 anyone can be whatever, uh, what, how does that say? Ingo, be kind, right? Um, Councilmember Tate?
Yeah, um, I'm just uh meeting, so we didn't have any committee meetings um over this past couple of weeks, uh, but um, I'm going to be meeting with Republic Services. They're doing a tour. Um, I also know that there is a recycle water plant. Um, I'm trying to get a tour for um Richmond's wastewater. Uh, they, I guess, partnered with one of the uh. They, I guess, partnered with one of the, I think it's Chevron or refinery, to get recycle water out to them. So I was going to do a tour of that plan as well. Tomorrow, I'm going to be, like I said, going to Republic Services, doing a tour of how our waste is being disposed of. Other than that, yeah, nothing much more to report. Just say, everybody, get the vaccine, the surge is is real, and we just need to make sure that that everybody's safe and stay safe. And and again, get out, we have these trails, we have these beautiful amenities. If you can, take a walk, relax, enjoy. Summer's almost over, which I'll be making a request for a future agenda item on that topic. Okay, we'll see you.
Thank you. Council member Toms?
Yes, I haven't had any committee meetings. I believe that there's one trying to be booked for next week for Westcat, but I haven't received confirmation on that. I wanted to also thank George Persley for his report. But I I also wanted to provide the timing. If if citizens want to write a letter in support of library services to the Measure X Committee and get it in the packet, the deadline is Friday, that's when it goes out. So I would suggest that you get that over to Lisa Driscoll by Thursday in order to be in the packet. You can also go to the Zoom meeting, they start at 5:00 PM, so it'll be on July 28th. And you can, you know, make public comment there as well. And actually, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, council members. Council requests for future agenda items. Council member Murphy?
Yep, just two. First, I wanted to let everyone know that a couple of months ago, it may have been a year, I don't know time these days. But a couple of months ago, the county actually passed a climate emergency resolution that I think is, at this point, very much timely with Pinot, as we dealt with a recent shut off this past weekend, and have been dealing, obviously, with just climate events happening all around us. I do think it's time for our council to pass a climate emergency resolution, which hopefully will steer us in the right direction around a climate action plan and all the things that we need to do. So I'd love some council support on that.
I like that idea. And whether or not that can be combined with the meeting that where staff gives gives us an update of the sustainability element or, you know, other items that we're working on for climate action, or if that just needs to be, you know, at the next meeting.
I was about to to say as well, there is a request to have a report back from staff as to what what, how the city is responding to climate action at all. I'd like to be able to answer that by itemizing accurately what it is that we're doing. And so, yes, I concur with council member Toms. I'm not sure that we need a resolution just now. I don't want to ignore ignore the importance of the city responding to things related to climate change. But I think, again, you know, there's a series of steps to be taken.
Yeah, the other, the other piece of that is if we if we had the resolution adopted, which there is a standard that a lot of the cities have adopted, then when staff gives us the report, it's like, that's one more step of us really addressing the fact that this is an emergency.
Yeah, exactly, following the staff report. Yeah. Was there something else, council member Murphy?
Sure, just to be clear, the climate emergency resolution is 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 per climate events that are happening around us that both staff can report on, but I think all of us are, have experienced climate events around wildfires and power shut offs and sea level rise is imminent as well. But again, I'm not hearing consensus on that.
I I I am in favor of-
Next statement is, is I'd love a presentation. I think the Ward One District School Board rep asked to give a presentation regarding school openings and all of that she is doing. So Jamila Smith Ward, excuse me, Jamila Smith Folds. I'd love to get a presentation from her as well.
Can you have consensus here?
Yeah, yeah.
That's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. So there were one, two, three people, okay, for that kind of presentation. And again, we're going to ask all of our presenters in the interest of happiness, have ample time for questions and answers, and proceed with all the items on our agenda for a 10 to 15 minute presentation. It may not be that long, but I think this is the information, kind of information that is also available in that through other means for parents and and also to us. But we do want to continue or even establish relationship with that person, and so we would welcome her to make a presentation. Okay, council member Tate?
Yeah, I was just going to, you know, if we could have, you know, schools are going to be opening up, so we already got consensus to to have that. Also, council member Alex Griffin Walker, or I think it's Walker Griffin, had put a resolution out on the Equal Pay Act. And I'm just like to see that a resolution come back similar to that, reflecting our values on equal pay, and that that those values are reflected in in our policies for city contracts. I'll be getting that information and working with the city attorney, if the council wills it, to hopefully bring a resolution somewhere back.
Okay, not knowing much more than that, equal pay means to me, you know, non-gendered based pay. Is that what this is about?
Yeah, there's pay differentials between men, women, you know. And so we just want to make sure that we have policy that reflects, reflects equal pay. The Act has been around since 1963, and these practices have been out there where people are not getting equal pay for equal work. And what I like to do is make sure that we have something written in Pinot that reflects those values, or that reflects the values of equal pay.
Okay, so so my 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 question, and pardon the ignorance here, but is it is it an issue? Here's the thing about resolutions and and this declaration of our values. How those are actually manifest in in the implementation of and operations in our city? And so is there an issue about non-equal pay in the city of Pinot? As far as I, I just don't know that. So maybe I would say that, again, prior to a resolution, can we give a report back as to how the conditions are in Pinot?
I I simply want to make that statement through resolution. And, you know, let me develop that resolution is what I'm asking for to bring back to council for for review. And again, I'll send you a copy of the resolution that Hercules is doing. And that way you could see somewhat of the language that's in there.
Council member Toms?
I I was just, I did read the the information that came from the council member in Hercules. And I think that they actually worked with their city attorney to have an ordinance adopted. And I'm wondering, do we need to spend, you know, legal time, legal staff time on developing an ordinance that sort of, and I need clarity. It it seems like a feel good ordinance for something that's already in the law. And, you know, I I haven't read enough to know. So, I mean, that's kind of a question that I have, as to whether or not we need to be spending money on an ordinance, or is it just a resolution? So we should probably research it a little bit.
Well, I I'd like to start with the resolution. And if it becomes an ordinance that it later did, I mean, that's something that it would move into.
Can can we, can can that resolution draft be sent to all of us first? And then come bring this back to see what what we need to do after that?
I think that would be a good, can we put it on the agenda to discuss?
City Attorney Cash?
Yeah, so if I wouldn't suggest circulating a draft resolution and then there be some discussion over email. I think the appropriate way would be to to have a future discussion of this item at a at a meeting. We could discuss whether or not it's a resolution, an ordinance, and how best to proceed.
Yes, and I was, thank you, yeah, and I wasn't thinking about circulating and commenting. I just that evidently, at least one council member has this. I would like to know more about it before taking more council time and staff time. And I, and and if it's a resolution that's available somewhere that we can all access, it's just a matter of us individually reading it prior to further discussion.
This is City Clerk Yopu. I'm happy to pull that and get circulated to the council for review, if that's helpful.
Thank you. Okay, it was-
Was there consensus?
So I I need to have a little bit more understanding of what this is about. Yeah.
So anybody else? Do we want to vote, do we want to vote on whether there's consensus for bringing back the-
What is there?
Or having a simply a discussion on the topic of equal pay resolutions and ordinances from which the city council can provide additional directions? I wasn't sure how the, how people felt or how the votes stacked up.
Yeah, first of all, yeah, right, I'm still, it's like, is is there a problem in Pinot about this? That's my big question. Is this an issue in Pinot amongst city practices? I don't know. So given that, and I don't know if any of us can answer, I think we're jumping to to, you know, wanting to have this resolution as a statement because we're, there's a presumption that it's a necessary statement, because there is a problem. And pardon me if that's not what you're intending here, but that's how I'm taking-
No, I understand, but, you know, this is, this is something that, for me, that I've I've seen in the workplace in general, that I know is a practice that it goes on. After speaking with my constituents, people that I talk to, it's a great resolution. And I think that that it's something that that it's a statement of values. And to me, I want to make sure that every contract that we put out, that that language is in there. And that's primarily what I would like to start with is a resolution, and then eventually move that into language for the contracts. Yes, it's a law, but I'd like it written within within the contracts that we hand out as a council in the city. So, I mean, not to have a full blown discussion about this, I'd like to just see if I can get it for a future agenda item, if possible.
Thank you. Is there consensus on this?
Sure.
Council member Toms?
I'm I'm still worried about having staff in time on something that is already the law. And I I would like to, I'd like to take a look at what Hercules has done. And I think that that might, you know, save some money. I'm just concerned about diverting staff to work on something that is already a standard. And I just want to understand it first.
Completely understand, that's fine with me. I would just say that Hercules pretty much wrote it already, we would just be tailoring it. I I don't imagine a lot of city staff time, but that's fine.
Yeah, allow us at least another meeting so that we can take a look at it. And, you know, you can bring it back to request as an agenda item again, council.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Council member, I think, did I go through everyone? Everyone had, yeah, their request. Council member Toms, pardon me.
I don't necessarily have a request for another agenda item, but I would like to have some time, you know, I know that we have the list of future agenda items. But if we could sort of go out for the whole year, so we can understand, what dates do we typically do our, you know, first quarter budget adjustments and the second quarter and so on? That would be useful to me, whether it's a, you know, an informational item available to the public or available to the council or emailed to us.
This request rings familiar, and I also remember the city manager saying, oh, I owe you that. Is that true, the city manager? Is that still something in the works?
It is a collaboration between me and some other city staff members, and yes, we owe you that.
Okay, so, okay, so as as it said, duly noted.
Just so I'm, just so I'm clear, that's a timeline, right? We want a timeline for, so, oh, I see, okay.
Reflecting the usual practices in this year and what-
With comments and stuff as to what's being, I'm sorry, I missed that last part, council member Toms, was it?
Yeah, you know, we have the list of future agenda items, but there's some standard things that happen annually at certain times of the year. And for us, I think it would be useful to understand, when is the first quarter budget adjustment done? When is the second quarter budget adjustment done? When do we start, you know, budget practices? And what other things do we do throughout the year? Like, we have a report that's due up to the state or our housing element that's due April 1st. So when do we expect to see that report? Just that that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I think that request was was when you first got elected back in.
Yeah, but since we had the budget discussion today about future adjustments, I think it would be useful.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And we're entering a new fiscal, we've entered a new fiscal year. So now we have at least a year and a half of knowing the usual kinds of things and some new ones that are going to be usual into the new year. Okay, thank you. So that, I guess that's a report back to town, city manager, yes, thank you. All right, I have no future agenda item request. Please catch up with all the requests that have been have been made. And and thank you for coordinating your efforts, staff, to keep us as council members informed. So, city manager, any report from you?
I don't have any report to say at the moment, thank you.
Thank you. City attorney, any report from you?
Nothing to report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you all. Thank you, everyone. I will adjourn to the next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be in August. We are not going to be meeting the first Tuesday of the month. That will be August 3rd. We will next meet on August 17th. I am adjourning in remembrance of Amber Schwartz. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Everybody, see you.
You, good night.